Interested in the new TV3 station and had questions with regards to the Cable Advisory Committee. It was the first I was aware that a committee has been established. Obviously out of the loop, so I was just wondering if we could get a copy of how many people are on the advisory committee and who they are, as well as have they met yet? And if there are any minutes, I'd like to just amend this, if there's been any minutes, if we could get a copy of those minutes so we can better see what's been transpired. I think it's great we have the station up and running to a point and just want to keep an idea of what's happening so we're able to answer people's questions as well. Thank you.
Counselor Longo Kern, if I could amend that to ask if we're doing interviews for a manager of the station also?
Yes, please.
On the motion by Counselor Longo Kern, seconded by Counselor Delarussell, as amended by President Carviallo, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Seventeen, five, three, five, offered by Counselor Longo Kern. Be it resolved that the Memphis City Council be to be provided a breakdown from the school department of the number of school transfers from one Memphis public school to another requests in 2015, 16, 17, and the number of transfers allowed by each school. Be it further resolved that the numbers be broken down by school. Counselor Longo Kern.
Thank you, President Carviallo. I believe within the next couple nights we're meeting with the Superintendent of Schools to go over, we don't have it yet, but hopefully we'll get it sooner than later, the budget for the school department. I was recently asked how many transfers there are from one school to another by a resident, and I have had no idea, so I said I would put this on. I'd be curious to see how many transfer requests are out there and how many are allowed per each school. I know there's a discrepancy with the amount of children that are in each school, so I just want to see, and there was an issue with class size for one of the grades at the Roberts that was discussed last night at the school committee meeting. So I just want to see how it is all broken down over the last three years so we can get a better idea. When we look at the numbers, we can kind of have the big picture. And also want to be able to answer people's questions. I know a lot of people do request, I don't know if it's a lot, but people do request transfers, so it's just something that we've never asked and we've never got an answer to. So I think it's be relevant to get these answers before we meet with the superintendent or at least before we vote on the budget potentially next Tuesday. So if I could move approval with a roll call vote?
Thank you. Counselor Delarussell.
Second, Mr. President.
On the motion by Counselor Longo Kern, as seconded by Counselor Delarussell, a roll call vote has been requested. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Delarussell.
Yes.
Counselor Falco.
Yes.
Counselor Knight.
Yes.
Counselor Longo Kern.
Yes.
Vice President Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Scott Pelley.
Yes.
President Carviallo.
Yes. Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Motion passes. Seventeen, five, three, six, offered by Counselor Longo Kern. Be it resolved that the Memphis City Council be provided a list from the school department of all increased and decreased class sizes within our Memphis public schools. For example, if a class is adding a class due to class size issues or vice versa. Counselor Longo Kern.
Thank you, President Carviallo. I put this on last week, I believe it was Wednesday, Thursday, I started getting phone calls with regards to the concern of class sizes, mainly at one school and one grade. And I put this on because there's talk of, every year I'm assuming, depending on the numbers, there may be one or two or three, I don't know how many, where a teacher is pulled from a grade to accommodate another grade, and I wanted to see how many of those we have this coming year so we can obviously get control of it and make sure all our class sizes are low. I believe after last night's meeting, we were guaranteed that all class sizes would be under 22, and I believe the class average is about 20 students per classroom, so I just want to make sure we maintain that level and we make sure that we're going to provide those little class sizes to everybody, every student across the board.
Thank you. On the motion by Counselor Longo Kern, seconded by Counselor Delarussell, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Seventeen, five, three, seven, offered by Counselor Longo Kern. Be it resolved that the Memphis City Council be provided with a list from the school department of all new hires and newly created positions within the fiscal year 2018 budget. Be it further resolved that we also receive a list of all positions that have been eliminated. Counselor Longo Kern.
Thank you again, President Carviallo. Each year we are left with the large school budget and to look and see, try to figure out who's been added, who's been taken out of the budget. Each year we have sometimes a position or two or three that has been created, which obviously is something that I think needs to be in bold print, if not, obviously given to us separately so we can understand what is going on in the school system and be able to vote on the budget accordingly. So I asked for a list of all those new hires and newly created positions, as well as all the positions that are being eliminated so we can do our job.
Thank you, Counselor Longo Kern. On the motion by Counselor Longo Kern, seconded by Counselor Scott Pelley, all those in favor?
Aye.
Roll call.
Mr. Clerk, roll call has been requested.
Counselor Delarussell.
Yes.
Counselor Falco.
Yes.
Counselor Knight.
Yes.
Counselor Longo Kern.
Yes.
Vice President Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Scott Pelley.
Yes.
President Carviallo.
Yes. Five in the affirmative, two in the negative, a motion passes. Seventeen, five, three, eight, offered by Vice President Marks. Be it resolved that the lack of attention from utility companies regarding double poles in our community be discussed. Vice President Marks.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to, I received a letter from Superintendent of Wires, Stephen Randazzo, and this is a recent happening, Mr. President. The letter is dated June 5, 2017, and it's from Verizon. As we all know, National Grid for many years in this community was the custodian of all the telephone poles, or I should say, a good majority of the telephone poles in the city. And just recently Verizon and National Grid reached an agreement on who the custodian of the poles are, and I think this is pertinent information for this council. So I'd like to read just a portion, Mr. President. As I stated, dated June 5, 2017, from Verizon. This is, "Dear Municipal Official, this is to inform you that effective May 31, 2017, National Grid and Verizon have reached an agreement that changes the way the two companies perform utility pole work in your community. The agreement updates operating procedures in place for more than 30 years. Under the new agreement, custodial areas where one or more other pole owner had assumed responsibility for replacing and installing new utility poles on a municipal basis have been eliminated. Instead, National Grid will be responsible for all replacements, relocations, and new installations of jointly owned poles. Verizon will be responsible for removing all jointly owned poles once the replacement pole is installed and all facility transfers are completed." So right now, Mr. President, according to this letter, Verizon will now be responsible for the removal of all double poles, which is brand new to this community and I think one that people should be aware of. I offer this resolution tonight, Mr. President, to address the lack of attention with utility companies to the number of double poles we have in the community. According to our Superintendent of Wires, we have a little over 8,400 telephone poles within the community, and according to the latest list I just received, there are roughly 245 double poles in the community. So if you look at it as a street situation, almost one out of every three streets in our community has a double pole on it. Right now, the current list is Verizon has 88 poles that they're responsible for removing wires, and that's why the pole is still up, the double pole. National Grid has 51 poles they're responsible for, and Comcast has 101 poles. The city of Memphis, Mr. President, and I'm proud to report this, back several years ago, was on close to, I believe it was 90 to 100 poles, that we had fire call boxes that were still hooked up, and they were holding the utility companies from removing the double pole. To date, Mr. President, we have one double pole we're on, the city of Memphis. And that is a huge accomplishment, and the Superintendent of Wires, Stephen Randazzo, should be commended on his work, Mr. President, for putting together a priority list and getting our city utility, which is the fire call box, off the poles, Mr. President. But double poles, as we know, are a blight to our community and a public safety concern to area residents. Utility companies are unresponsible and have no incentive to remove double poles in a reasonable timeframe. The current system for moving poles is dysfunctional and the state law ineffective. Municipalities need a new approach that hold the utility companies accountable, requiring better coordination and improved communication to resolve this problem. As we all know, Chapter 164, Section 34B forbids companies from keeping double poles up for more than 90 days. However, there is no penalty to the utility company for not complying with the law. On July 28, 2005, the Mass Supreme Court, Judicial Court upheld a lower court ruling overturning a Bedford, Mass bylaw imposing $100 a day fine for each set of double utility poles. The court ruled that only the state legislature has the authority to impose a fine for keeping double poles. So based on that decision back in 2005, Mr. President, I offered a council resolution on October 3, 2006, requesting our state delegation amend Chapter 164, Section 34B, allowing city or town to, the ability to enact local ordinances or bylaws prohibiting double poles beyond the 90 days, punishable by a fine not to exceed a maximum of $100 per occurrence per day. Rep. Scortino then on October 6, 2006, based on the council resolution, offered a sponsor to bill, Mr. President, with that exact terminology, which would allow, it was House Bill 1675, which would allow local cities and towns to actually fine these utility companies. And it got bantered around in the State House, and what ultimately ended up happening, from what I understand, is that the utility companies were upset, let's see where, let me see. The utility companies, Mr. President, were upset because they said it was unfair to fine the custodian of the pole. For instance, at the time, if National Grid owned the pole, they also had Comcast, Verizon on the pole, and they may be the ones holding up the process. So they said, "How can you fine us as the custodian where these other utilities are holding up the process?" And in my opinion, Mr. President, the responsibility of the utility company that's the pole owner, they have license agreements with all these other attachies that are on the pole, and their license agreement states that they have the authority to transfer wires at the attachies' expense. So if National Grid thought Comcast was taking too long removing their wires, under their license agreement, they can go in at the attachies' expense and remove the wires, and we can get rid of the double pole. So you can see how the ambiguity that's out there really lends itself to a process that is not functioning, Mr. President. And this has been an issue, as you can see, it dates back to 2006 and far beyond that. So what I want to offer tonight, Mr. President, with the hopes of getting approval from this council, is that the state create, and this would be the Department of Telecommunications, they create, Mr. President, a statewide database which they oversee and they enforce. Right now, there's a database called Pole Lifetime Management System, and all the utility companies, it's PLM, all the utility companies and many municipalities have access to this system so they can go online and look at these reports, which I have a copy in front of me, that states who's on the pole, how long the pole's been there, and who's responsible for taking their wires off. And they have access to this system, but there's no oversight by the state. So my request tonight through a motion to this council is that we request our state delegation to file legislation creating the statewide enforcement and penalty structure under the oversight and responsibility of the Mass Department of Public Utilities. And by doing so, Mr. President, we'll create a state entity that's responsible for the oversight and also serve as an online tracking process that allows review of the state and possible fining by the state. So the municipalities don't have to get involved. It's the utility, Mass Department of Public Utilities, which currently, right now, is the oversight for utilities in Massachusetts. They should step up to the plate and take responsibility. So that would be my recommendation tonight, Mr. President, that our state delegation file legislation to allow enforcement by Mass Department of Public Utilities and also the ability to fine, Mr. President, by Mass Department of Public Utilities. So we can once and for all put this issue in the rearview mirror and not have to reinvent this issue every year after year when the utility companies are just ignoring our request to move double, remove double poles, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Presidents. Counselor Delarussell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Did you, nothing to do with it. On the motion by Vice President Marks, seconded by Counselor Longo Kern, all those in favor?
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote has been requested, Mr. Clerk.
Counselor Delarussell.
Yes.
Counselor Falco.
Yes.
Counselor Knight.
Yes.
Counselor Longo Kern.
Yes.
Vice President Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Scott Pelley.
Yes.
President Carviallo.
Yes. Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Motion passes. Petitions, presentations, and similar matters. Seventeen, five, three, nine, petition by Lisa Defebritis, 32 Winford Way, Medford, to address the council about property owners maintaining minimal standards of care. Good evening.
Good evening.
Name and address for the record, please.
I'm sorry, name Lisa Defebritis, Winford Way.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to kindly request the council to consider the implementation of an ordinance to require property owners to maintain their property at a minimum standard of care and cleanliness. Some cities have such an ordinance in place, but Medford does not. The majority of residents do maintain their property in good condition, but the few who do not cause a significant impact to their neighbors and to those who pass by these properties. For example, one, there's a potential fire hazard for uncut grass that grows to excessive heights that can become a fire hazard in the summertime. Two, the attraction of unwanted animals and pests, for example, rotted wood on structures of a property or lying on their property that can attract termites and easily spread to neighboring homes. The attraction of rats, mice, that can cause infestation. Three, the deterrence of prospective buyers who want to purchase and or invest in a property that is in close proximity to a neglected property. The depreciation value of a property that is in the vicinity of a neglected or deplorable property. One could argue from a legal standpoint that a negligent property owner could be liable for damages because their negligence causes the loss of value to another property owner. Lastly, it's simply unsightly, inoffensive to see a neglected property in our neighborhood. And allowing property to be kept in deplorable conditions goes against the efforts of the city to maintain a sense of pride and decency in our community. The city has ordinances in place for dog owners, dog waste, property owners to keep their sidewalks clear of debris and snow, public littering, et cetera. Not having an ordinance in place to address negligent property owners hurts the majority of residents by allowing so-called slum property owners to embarrass our city, cause a depreciation of surrounding property value, and increase safety risk. Additionally, without an ordinance in place, the city and its residents are helpless to address this issue, leaving individual residents to try and resolve matters on their own, which could result in bad situations amongst neighbors that could lead to civil unrest and violence. We shouldn't have, we shouldn't have to wait until a bad situation occurs before recognizing the need for a common sense ordinance to ensure Medford can be proud of its city and its surroundings. Happy to, I would like to share a copy of an ordinance from another city regarding the cleanliness expectations from its residents and property owners that I'd happy to leave as a reference for consideration, and thank you for your time.
Counselor Delarussell.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could, through the chair, ask the citizen, Ms. Defebritis, if, A, is there a particular incident that is inspiring you to ask for this ordinance? And secondly, my second question would be to ask if she's aware or finds a failing in public health regulations and building code regulations that are often invoked to remedy these situations?
Thank you, yes, I have. First off, for years, I lived next to a property like that, and for years, I lived next to a property in that, in deplorable conditions. Both myself and many of my resident, the neighbors on my street have tried for years to reach out to the city to have this addressed. I personally, myself, over the past year, have spoken to the building department, the health department, the police, the city, every department that everyone has referred me to, I have contacted, and I have been told that there is nothing they can do about it unless it's a safety issue. There was limitations, and it brought me to this particular point. There is no ordinance in the city that allows the city to address this problem. You know, if there was an ordinance, the city and the police can go there and say, "Hey, this is an ordinance, you need to take care of this, this is unacceptable." Whatever the conditions are stated for within an ordinance, so it allows the authorities of the city to enforce it and/or potentially fine property owners if they don't keep them. Again, I'm only asking a minimal standard. I mean, I'm not saying they have to keep it as a palace, but there are certain minimal expectations. I feel that everybody should respect for your community and for your neighbors. I'm not sure I answered all your questions.
You did. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Vice President Marks.
Thank you, Mr. President. There is an ordinance regarding the exterior of the property. It's a clean it or lean it ordinance. It's been in effect for a number of years, and I know the building department has used that for several properties throughout the community and have been very responsive to the owners of the property and cleaning the property itself. Regarding a property that may have other issues, as Counselor Delarussell mentioned, maybe border health issues or rodent issues, which would be border health, I think they could enforce if they needed to, and maybe it's just a matter of getting the right attention to get down there and have them take a look at the property to see if it's in need. I'm not aware of the property, but like I said, the clean it or lean it would apply to the exterior. So if someone has, just say, a bathtub on their front lawn, and believe it or not, it's happened before.
There's a portable, there's a portable toilet in the driveway that's been sitting there for six months.
And to me, that would be ideal for the clean it or lean it. That would be ideal. So I think we could remedy, I don't know if you want to give an address, but we can recommend through this council that the Board of Health, as well as code enforcement, go out to the property and do a site view. I mean, I-
I did go to the building department last week, and they were, I explained it, and they told me there was only limited resources. They were limited to what they could do based on the clean it or lean it that you were referring to. They did mention that they were going to go there and try and talk to the owner about it. I haven't heard back. I'm sorry?
Point of information is Counselor Scott Pelley.
Is a porta potty there?
Yeah.
Yeah, is it, yeah, because we, I'm sorry to interrupt, I just, I just, I wasn't know if someone just put, but a porta potty, I think that a building department should know through the permitting process, correct? The Board of Health.
It's probably not a, it's not a legal one. I'm sure it's just, I'll sit up.
I know, but if it's there too long.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
If I may, I mean, there are, there are many issues in this particular property, and I'm for sure there are other properties throughout the city. The bottom line is, it's just like, there should be a minimal expect, you know, expectations of property owner. For example, what about the, you know, there is no ordinance for currently or anything on the books about grass. When you have a drought, like a situation we had last year where it didn't rain all summer, and you have grass that's, you know, like four feet high, I mean, that's a fire hazard. There should be some kind of ordinance and expectation there.
Clean it or lean it applies to all that, just so you know. That, it applies to grass that's unkept, it applies to putting items on your lawn or in your yard that don't-
I was told by the building, I don't mean to interrupt, I was told by the building department last week that they were, that was not applicable to the situation. So this-
I think you've got bogus information.
Well-
Because I, right, and I know, I know it's applied in other circumstances, I don't want to give out where the property was, but that clean it or lean it, and it was regarding tall bushes, regarding tall grass that was unkept, so I think you might have got some-
Okay, I spoke to two people, one in person, one on the phone, gave me the property address. They said they were going to go out, speak to them, and again, I was told that there was, they were limited in, to what they were able to do to enforce it or force, you know, the property owner to do anything about it. And again, I've been after this for years, and more recently last week, so I have yet to see any results. I haven't heard any back from the building department. And again, if there's an ordinance, if that is applicable, then is that, is that a written document or is that somewhere?
It's a city ordinance.
It's a city ordinance.
I don't have the site section, but it's a city ordinance.
And that is, and that pertains to everything that I'm describing?
Absolutely.
Yes? Absolutely, okay, so they can use that to enforce and, and enforce the property owner to make their property comply to a certain standard?
Clean it or lean it. Clean it meaning, clean it up or lean it.
All right, so I'm very confused because, again, I've been to every department in the city for the past year and a half or two years, and I have-
Well, if you're that confused, grab a seat, and you can come back here with us.
You have to. So if I could get a copy of that ordinance at some point, and if maybe the building department can follow up on this, and I can get some answers to know what the next step, I appreciate it.
Give us an address. Do you have an address?
We need an address.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Addresses all the time.
Counselor Longo Kern.
I was going to mention the clean it or lean it ordinance too, and I feel like if we get the proper department, you know, the person in the building department, we can try to get somebody out there for a site visit, so I think the best way to do that is for her to email us all, and we can, you know, obviously help work it out. But I agree, I think there's a lot of properties. I was contacting the building department last week on a property on Dunan Street. It's been under construction for about two and a half years, there's no stairs, there's rocks, and, I mean, the grass couldn't even grow because there's rocks everywhere, and I'm getting complaints on it. So it is hard for the building department, it is, sometimes, hands are tied, their hands are tied, but for something like this, it seems like our Board of Health and our building department should be able to do a site visit, and if there's no permit on that porta potty that's in somebody's driveway, something should be done.
Thank you. Counselor Knight.
Mr. President, I have had great luck with the Board of Health and the Code Enforcement Office in getting some of these issues rectified as well, so I really think it might be that we need to point an individual in the right direction. With that being said, though, the lady was kind enough to pass out a copy of an ordinance that I'm hoping we can all get copies of. At this point in time, I'd ask that the paper be received and placed on file. We have an opportunity to take a look at the draft ordinance that's in place, and we can contrast that with our existing rules and regulations that are established by the Board of Health and the Building Commission, and then we can determine whether or not we need to move forward with a minimum standard of cleanliness ordinance. Mr. President?
Thank you. Larry, if you can make us a copy? Name and address for the record, please.
G. NewsO, 35 Power Street.
Jeanuzo, 35 Parrish Street. I think on the face, when you look at these properties that are distressed, they're a symptom to a larger issue, and although I appreciate the clean it or lean it approach, it's not just residents that we have a problem with, it's also businesses. So my position is, a lot of these instances, when you delve a little deeper, you're dealing with people who are barely hanging on. They're the folks working two jobs, who don't have time to mow the lawn, they're being deaf by paper cuts in fees and expenses from the city, and I really think it's a very slippery slope, and if we're going to start to really look at enforcing a clean it or lean it, then it should also be applied, perhaps more heavy-handedly, to the property owners who allow their commercial properties to remain empty and an eyesore on the city for a tax write-off in their real estate portfolio. Certainly, those people can afford it far more than some individual who maybe is having trouble keeping their property. So I would urge you, as you start to look at this ordinance and delve into it deeper, to consider that some of these folks, it's an issue of finance and time, and this is another one of those methods and approaches that can often lead to gentrification, and I think it's no secret how I feel about balancing our development and our image with not gentrifying our residents out. So I would just ask you to consider those things as you look at it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nuzo. On the motion by Counselor Knight that we review and placed on file, seconded by Counselor Delarussue, although, he is doing, the messenger is doing that as we speak, all those in favor? Motion passes.
Is the president of suspension of the rules?
Motion by Vice President Marks to move suspension of the rules.
Mr. President, is the resident willing to appear before the council?
Thank you. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Robert Penta, Zero Summit Road, Medford, Mass., former member of this August body. I come here tonight on two very important issues that directly affect this Medford City Council and the taxpayers of our community. The first one is to address the issue of the CPA, the Community Preservation Act. As we know, when it was passed in November of 2015, it has a lifespan of five years from the date of its passage. It's now going to be just about into its second year with three years to go. The unfortunate part about this CPA is that, at an election night some two years ago, almost 1,200 to 1,300 ballots were never acted upon, because a lot of people never turned the ballot over to vote for it, so whether it was going to pass or not, nobody even knew. Apparently, it did pass from those members that did vote. The unfortunate part about this particular act, and I'm going to grant the correlation to the connectivity fee, it's another tax being opposed upon the taxpayers of this community, but unfortunately, they're not getting that for which they voted for. The Enabling Act, which goes back to 2001 and 2002, addressed itself through the years, right up until this past year, to the fact that whatever and however the population count takes place, and however the tax valuation on assessed pieces of property here in the city of Medford, as in all cities and towns, determines the dollar amount that will come back from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Now, we all know that for the past years, the Commonwealth has been having a tough time, so let's just go back to fiscal year 2013, the state gave back 52 percent. Fiscal year 2014, 31 percent. Fiscal year 2015, 29.7 percent, and this present past fiscal year 2016, they're at 18 percent. So for every dollar that every taxpayer here in the city of Medford has given up as it relates to the assessed evaluation, or the 1.5 percent, the state will give back approximately 18 percent, which is nowhere near the dollar for dollar or the 100 percent. I've spoken to members up at the legislature, and I've spoken to other cities and towns, where they feel to some degree that the taxpayer is not getting their real bang for the buck. You guys and gals are into this thing on the second year, you still have no program, there's still no designation where and how that money can be spent, whether it's for housing, affordable housing, parks and recreation, or historical values, those are the three primary things, 10 percent at a minimum of each one of those. So what I did is I looked at the law, and I found it on page, it's section 18, Larry, he's not here, when he comes back. And I think what I would want to do, and I'll pass one over for each of you, the intent of what I'd like to have is to have you as a city council consider the following: since in fact the Commonwealth of Mass. is not paying back dollar for dollar, as people have been led to believe because of the 158 cities and towns that now make up the CPA throughout the Commonwealth, I don't think it's fair that we should keep paying, having our taxpayers pay their 1.5 share for the purposes of hopefully thinking they're going to get a match back. The proposal that I'm asking you as a council to do is to file a piece of legislation to amend section 18, A and B, and in those two sections, they basically will say, if in fact the Commonwealth cannot meet its obligation of dollar for dollar for which the city of Medford at 1.5 is taxing their residents, then the city can suspend, by a vote of the city council, suspend any further collection of those taxes or that 1.5 percent, or you could also vote to reduce it down to 1 percent until further notice, until the Commonwealth meets its obligation. That's the first part. And the second part, and I think it's very important that it's understood, that if this city, in this council, wants to not renew the CPA after its fifth year, at present, the only way you can do it is it becomes automatically taking place unless the city council, by a vote, puts the question on the ballot and the people vote for it all over again. My amendment to that portion states basically this: at the end of the fifth year, it automatically dies. If in fact, if in fact, the people of this community, and whoever the council might be at that time, wishes to go forward and renew it again for another five years, then the question goes on the ballot. You are dealing with, right now, your second fiscal year on this CPA. I don't think anyone of you behind this rail have even been informed as to where and how that money is going to be spent, and there are provisos in there, it's a 12-page document, there are 18 sections to go with it, and in those 18 sections, it's very important to understand and to read, there's a great latitude that up to a nine-member board or a commission has with that money, and you as a council haven't even been right into the picture, no public meetings and hearings have been held to find out where and how that money can be spent. While 30 percent can go to housing, historical, and open space and recreational, the remaining 70 percent can be likewise used for the same, if not similar, situations that CPA will approve. I think you folks really need to take a deep, hard look at this particular law, because as of July 4th, as I said, once people start getting hit with a connectivity fee every other month, and then begin to realize that their 1.5 percent, which is in excess of a million dollars, is being collected here at City Hall, and the state is not giving back the dollar for dollar as people thought they did when they voted for this, that's true unfair taxes being placed upon taxpayers at the present time. The second thing I would like to talk about is the money that on October 7th of 2014, after many weeks of, excuse me, on October 7th in 2014, I don't know what's going on On October 7th, in 2014, after that then-Medford City Council was reviewing Park Medford's application before the city of Medford, and Mayor McGlynn, at that point in time, signed the contract on October 7th, 2014, five additional addendums, five additional addendums were included into that Park Medford contract, and the one that stands out is the following, it says, he's recommending $250,000 of the revenue generated on a yearly basis to be dedicated to business district improvements. Now, that's a result of the mayor making the comment, after deliberating and discussing concerns issued by many business people in the community, the mayor is recommending the following, and he did that the same day, the same day he made that announcement. On December 18th, 2015, the mayor sent out a notice to the members of the city council, which basically said in part, "A representative of each business district will recommend to the mayor some proposed uses. I respectfully request and recommend that the sum of $250,000 be transferred from the sale of real estate to be used for improvements to the five business districts with kiosks as recommended earlier this year, which would have been effective calendar year 2016." Now, we go a little bit further, we go to December 23rd, 2014, once again, in the press release issued by the local press from the mayor's office, it states, "250,000 annually would be subject to appropriation for district improvements." And as a result of that, that came from then-the mayor's secretary, Lisa Evangelista, and she was given that by then-budget director Stephanie Burke. And then lastly, we have on January 24th of 2016, once again, after a signing ceremony of a 10-year contract for the program, Mayor McGlynn said $250,000 of the city's annual revenue would be used for improvements to business districts. This is the catch. "The prior mayor made a commitment to that," Burke said. "When we initially rolled it out, my interpretation was that that would be about and beyond the fixed amount that we collected." Now, how could that be about and beyond when the mayor specifically said it would come out of your real estate account? Each district right now is $100,000 behind in what they should have been getting for the past two years, inclusive of Medford Square. I believe, as councilmembers, you have a deep responsibility right now to get answers from this mayor as it relates to not only the $50,000 for each square, where is the money, because that money should be designated in the real estate account. It's unfair to the business districts in this community. This is an election year, you're going to see a lot of puffing going along, well, we're going to do this and we're going to do that. Well, I don't think any of these districts have seen anything going on right now that makes them a lot better than they were when they first started, when Park Medford came in. You're talking about $500,000 that should be accounted for right now, that should come out of that account, sale of real estate, for which the mayor indicated. You folks have not received one document from this administration telling you, telling you that that money would not be forthcoming and not be forthcoming from that account. I just think it's unfair, I think it's unfair to the taxpayers, the business people in this community, the Chamber of Commerce, who are all led to believe that that money would be forthcoming and to be there. Mr. President, I would like to ask that someone on the council, maybe all the council members, ask the mayor, where is the money? When is it going to be forthcoming to the business districts? And how can we see it so the people of this community will have an understanding that this city keeps its word? It's just not political puffing. Is, Mr., I'd like to pass out the site and sections of the law which we just talked about. Could you give one to each one, including the clerk? I'd like to have you look at it, and in the July meeting, I'd like to come back and see what your thoughts are. You know, ratepayers in this community are paying an awful lot, not only for their taxes, and their water bills, their sewer bills, now a connectivity fee, you know, and now we're looking at a CPA tax, that all intentions were good, and I think a lot of people would say, if we were getting the 100 percent back from the Commonwealth, we'd be in good shape. But if it's only progressed for 18 percent of this year, it's just unfair to keep it in the Medford taxpayers. Whether it's 50, 60, 70, 80 dollars a year, that's not the point, it's another tax, another tax that cannot be accounted for, and this one comes from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So this would probably be easier for you folks to even deal with, because it's not even coming from the city of Medford. Be more than happy to answer any questions, but I just think, you know, when you start looking at these things, it's an election year, and walk on the streets and talking to people all day long, this is what I hear. Why are we paying for these things? Why are we paying for a connectivity fee when we have $850,000 in a water and sewer surplus account? Why are we paying for CPA tax when we're not even getting 100 percent reimbursement? And it just doesn't make any sense, and then you go into the business districts, they're just completely fed up, they just can't understand what's going on in this building here. There's absolutely no communication, there's no transparency as to how and what money is to be spent around here. Be more than happy to answer any question, if anybody has it.
Counselor Knight.
Mr. President, thank you very much. To the gentleman at the podium, I do believe, and refresh my memory, because I know you got a lot of good notes there, at one point in time, the previous administration did put forward a paper for the council to appropriate $250,000, isn't that correct?
Yes. Yes.
And do you know when that happened?
December, the first time it came about, after the discussions, like I said, it was October 7th, 2014.
October 2014.
That's when the contract was signed.
Okay, and then the paper was introduced to the council floor, I believe.
I believe it was presented before the council floor, a representative from mayor's office was here on that particular night, I believe it was in the following January, and I believe on January 28th of the following year, the full-blown discussion, even maybe Mr. Nash was the other night, I could be wrong, don't hold me to it, but we've had so many of those meetings, but.
So there was a request made of the council to appropriate $250,000 to the building districts, but the previous council didn't act on it?
The administration absolutely said it, that money was going to be earmarked on an annual basis from the sale of real estate to the five business districts.
The previous administration did send us a paper requesting.
Oh, yeah, and we got that, as a matter of fact.
And then that money was never appropriated because the council failed the act, correct?
You never got it, you never got the request to have it appropriated.
See, I think, I'm remembering that we got a paper requesting the $250,000 be appropriated, that's why I ask, because my recollection is a little bit different than that that was presented. But with that being said, I rest, Mr. President.
But you have, Mr. President, approximately $500,000 that needs to be accounted for for the years 2016 and coming into 2017. It's a lot of money, and where is it? And why isn't it back into the business districts? That's one of the reasons why Mayor McGlynn, back then, decided to amend it by adding those five additional things into the contract on an annual basis. This was going to be out of the sale of real estate, not something over and beyond that for which Park Medford was paying us, as the former budget director, now president mayor, has indicated.
Counsel Lango-Curran.
Thank you, President Carvajello. I thank Counselor, prior Counselor Penta for coming forward and refreshing our memory. I believe that, I agree with you, if it should come out of anywhere, it should be the sale of real estate, and I'm sure you're aware, the latest we've heard is that we are going to be asked to vote out of it, vote, take the money out of free cash at some point in the near future to give 50,000 to each business district. So I too, I mean, I feel that it should come out of the budget rather than free cash, but that's the way, that's what's playing out now.
Part of that argument, so to speak, back then, that was presented, it began on an annual basis, that the squares are representative, or representatives from each one of the squares would meet on an annual basis for the purpose. Now, let's just say if they were into their second year, which would be up to $100,000, this could be an ongoing project that maybe needs 50, 100, $150,000, and they could be able to correct whatever it's going to be needed, but it's not being done. There's been no meeting, there's been no allowance of the money even to come before the council to be spent, and have a presentation said, we're giving this money to Haynes Square, this money to West Medford, this is what the money is going to be used for, and a representative from each one of the people to come here. You know, this is still taxpayers' money, no matter how you want to cut it, no matter how it's garnered, the fact of the matter is, you have a responsibility as counselors to say, well, if this is what the deal was, 250 grand a year, you haven't even have it. You don't even have a financial report coming back to you, as you've asked on numerous occasions, on an annual or semi-annual basis, revenue coming in, you know, we could just go on and on, but at least on this particular issue, there's nothing, there's nothing to talk about, because there's nothing that's been presented. And going back to the CPA, the fact, Larry, could you just do this, please? Did you pass him up? Oh, okay. The thing on the CPA, we're not taking it away from anybody, all we're just saying is you're just going to suspend it, because if you're being told that you're going to get X amount of dollars back for every dollar that you put up, and you're not getting it, why would you want to still keep going back out there and taxing the ratepayers? And if you're taking the million dollars that you have already now for the first year, and you should ask for an accounting, it would be nice to have someone behind the rail, ask for an accounting of how much money did the city of Medford take in in its first year, you're going into your second year of a CPA, what's the intent of spending that money? Where is the committee? What's their findings? Where's the public meeting? Where's the public hearing for input? You're into the second year of it, three years to go. It just doesn't make any sense. You've got to read the law, the law is very specific on the CPA especially. After it was passed and introduced, you put anyways up to a five to a nine-member board. It's got to be done right after the fact. You're supposed to have meetings, you're supposed to have this presented to the people. Pardon me?
We do have a board.
You have a board, where's the public meetings and how to spend the money?
They've already had one.
Can you tell me what it was?
I don't know the date.
Was it a public meeting before the council? No. That's what you've got to read and understand. Read the 12 pages that make up the law, it's very specific, and what I'm offering to you is here is not to abolish it, but just to put it on hold. If you're not going to get reimbursement from the state, then why take it out of the taxpayers of this community? And if you can't get it till the end of the fifth year, then so be it. And if you can't get it till the end of the 50th, then so be it. It was a nice try. And if you look at the makeup and how they go, they go by a population standard, and they also go by a tax rate on the appraised property, and then it goes into a skew. It's a very complex situation. But if we're generating, Mr. President, over a million dollars a year, or thereabouts, and we should be getting that back from the taxpayers of this community, we shouldn't even have to worry about historical things in this community. We shouldn't have to worry about our parks and open and recreation. We shouldn't have to worry about doing things in the area of public housing in that area, or anything else that CPA would allow you to do. But we don't even know that, none of you know that, because you haven't been told what it's going to be used for. You haven't even had any input. This is about as transparent as the number six.
Thank you.
Any questions from anybody? Well, I'll be back in July, and hopefully you'll have some kind of an answer to that, because-
Thank you.
If this council feels that they don't want to go forward, then I will just go to the state legislature and ask some representative to pass it, because a lot of these cities and towns, they're starting to feel it now, because people are being taxed for something that they're not getting their money back on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Name and address of the record, please.
Hi, my name is Joyce Paul, and I'm in A Mason Street in Medford. I was recently elected to the state committee, and I had no idea how many people would talk to me about how many issues they would talk to me about. And money is the number one. I definitely support Bob Penta saying that if we're supposed to get money back from the state and we're not getting it back, then we need to address that. It doesn't seem fair to say to people, "If you give us 1.5%, the state will match it, and that will be helpful to the area." If we're not getting the money back, we're not getting the money back, and it's not fair to the people. I also support having a little bit more understanding about this 250,000, this 500,000 in the business district. I don't know very much about that, but I do know a number of people have talked about the Preservation Act, and I'm not sure we all know in any way all the details that you know, but I do think that I would like to see us get a little better care, and I don't feel like we're getting, you know, the care that we should. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Name and address of the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Rob Capucci, 71 Evans Street. Just to bring up some of the points that Mr. Penta was talking about, excuse me. Tomorrow night, there is a meeting of the Community Preservation Commission. It's at the high school, I believe, at 5:00. The funds collected so far is $1,200,000, as I believe you know, from the subcommittee meetings on the budget. What you also know, too, is that, I mean, this also connects to what Lisa was saying, I forget your last name, I'm sorry. The property taxes in Medford, as the assessor said, are going up an average of 10 to 14%. And he said that based on historical records. So the CPA tax is going to be collecting a lot more money, too. One other clarification I want to make is, is I was opposed to the CPA in 2015, and when it passed, the very next day after the election, I went, I went to the office of elections at the Secretary of State's office, and I asked them, "How do we get rid of this?" And they said, "You don't. There's only, there's only one way after five years." Now, maybe what Mr. Penta said is true, but they didn't tell me that, about the city council being able to put it on the ballot. But what was told to me from the Secretary of State's office is, "It can only get on the ballot to be repealed the same way it got on the ballot to be passed." And that's, you have to go out and, citizen effort drive, to go out and get the signatures to get this thing on the ballot, to get it repealed. And one final thing I want to say about the matching from the state is, only half of the cities and towns have the CPA, but all 351 cities and towns pay into the fund that funds the towns that have it. So an unfortunate aspect of this is that lesser affluent communities that don't have the CPA end up, through their taxes, funding more affluent towns. We really don't need the CPA. I definitely agree with the purposes of it, the preservation of historical landmarks and open spaces, but Medford already sits on surpluses in budgets. We have a property tax that goes up every single year. We have surpluses in other accounts. There are other ways that we can do the objectives of the CPA without having the CPA. And if Mr. Penta is right, of some way of freezing this or reducing it, please, by all means, do that, because as the last speaker said, this is what's on the mind of the people. How are people going to upkeep their properties when they have the connectivity tax coming at them? When they have the perpetual property tax, when they have the meals tax, and the sales tax, and two-income taxes, and fees to go to Wright's Pawn, and fees for this, that, and the other thing? Gene Newsom's right, this is death by paper cuts. And this body has the power to do something about that. I mean, these are our neighbors. We know the people who own these restaurants out here. We grew up here our whole lives. Please, common sense. Please, thank you, Mr. President.
It was voted on by the people, if you can get it repealed, we'll review the paper. The people voted it in.
Right, and I sat at a polling center on Election Day, and as people came in, Mr. President, and they looked at that doctor's prescription of a ballot question, they went up to the poll worker and they said, "Hey, can you explain this to me?" And when they were told, basically, "It's a surcharge on your pro," oh, I'm not voting for that. You're right, you're right. It was a citizen effort drive, and kudos to Roberta Cameron for what she did. I don't agree with the CPA, but I definitely admire her efforts. It was job well done. But it was also done in a way that wasn't specifically clear to the voters of this community as to what was actually going to happen. And that, you're right, it was voted on by the people. What did he say? 1,300 people didn't even vote on it. Most people didn't even turn it over. More effort should be made to clarify exactly what was being voted on, and that there was even a ballot question. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Name and address of the record, please.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Rodriguez. I live at 201 Park Street. And the CPA did pass, much to my dismay, but because I didn't feel that the question was as clear and everyone had the information. But now that it has passed, when I heard of the Riverside Plaza, I thought, "Oh, that's a perfect use of our CPA funds." And I'm hoping that there's some way that maybe this commission can say, "You know what? Let's pay for that Riverside Plaza, even if we have to delay the start of it a few months, and take that $250,000 and put it back into the budget, and maybe pave four or five roads in the city and beautify the area." Because who wants to go to a park that's surrounded by streets that are filled with potholes? Maybe we can cover up that railway line on Salem Street. Because if we have a specific fund that is created for parkland, historic and low income, then that is definitely the first place that we should go for that. A half a million dollar project that's funded partially by grant money could be completely funded if we used the CPA money, and that would be a benefit to the community since that has passed, and I hope that will happen.
There is a meeting tomorrow night at 6:30 at the high school superintendent's conference room. You go there and make your suggestions to the members of the committee.
Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address of the record, please.
Andrew Castaneda, Cushion Street, Medford, Massachusetts. CPA tax, it does not hurt me that much at $60 a year, approximate, versus the $6,000 per year with the real estate tax. So putting it on a scale and a scheme of things, I would like to see my owner-occupied real estate tax exemption pass at the full 35% the state would give us, and that would probably save us the $400 of future increase under Prop 2.5, and reduce it 400, which would be $800 savings that we've missed out for many, many, many years, as some of our ever and more than has been doing so, if you lived in one house, your own house. And as far as the CPA, the vote was, I don't know how to explain it, but it was on page two, and it seemed like 10,500 people voted for the mayorship, and it seems to me about only 8,500 voted for the CPA. To me, it was about $2,000 on my memory. They never turned it over. And CPA tax is supposed to be used, if it ever gets used, for, one is open space. Well, all of a sudden, we possibly have a dirty 21E where I want my bike path to go the one-half mile out of the 20 miles that's already built. It's 1/20th, it's incomplete, and that's right behind your council president. I can't understand that if there is a dirty 21E, that is open space, and if someone started to dig around there for whatever reason, why it was initiated, and found arsenic and lead, I don't like that. And as Brianna was quoted in the transcript, which I finally read today, that, "What about the soccer fields over there?" And I had said previously at one of these meetings, "Well, how about those past are already there by the proposed new dog pot?" I don't understand this country and the city. Something is amiss.
Tomorrow night, 6:30, if you, at the-
What is it, CPA tax?
CPA meeting at the superintendent's conference room at Medford High School.
That's too far for my bicycle. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, I'd like to have a point of clarification. The two sections that I'm referring to on the section 18, basically, what the proposal says as follows, "At any time after imposition of the surcharge, the legislative body may approve by way of a vote to put on hold any local surcharge tax that cannot receive the matching dollar amount from the state upon population rank and real estate property tax levy calculation, as promulgated by Chapter 44B of the Massachusetts State Statute. This allows citizen taxpayers to the fair return of their tax payments until such time, until such time the state has the ability to match the intent and return amount as originally intended, as legislated and voted upon." This is not killing it. All it's doing is, how can you tax somebody for something that you're not getting for what you're supposed to be getting? And the second part of it is basically saying, very simply, "At the end of five years after the date of approval, and after Sections 3 to 7, which is inclusive, have been accepted by the city or town, said sections shall come to an end, and the surcharge imposed for the past five years shall end. If the city or town want to continue on with Sections 3 to 7, that's the inclusive part for which the city of Medford accepted of the Preservation Act, said act shall once again be placed upon the ballot for the taxpayers to vote upon, just the way it was the first time to be voted upon in November of 2015." That's fair, but to turn around and leave the law the way it is, that if you want to take it off, you've got to go out there and get the signatures to have the people vote it off. No, I don't think that's right. There's a sunset legislation, that's what it should be after five years, and if it's really working out that, if it's working out that well, then maybe the taxpayers will vote it, and maybe the taxpayers won't. But if you don't give them that chance and that choice, this will just keep going on at it for night and, and it's a tax that'll never end, because it doesn't have the opportunity to end.
Thank you. On the motion by Counselor Delarussue, seconded by Counselor Knight, all those in favor to receive and place on file. All's in favor? Motion passes.
Mr. President, excuse me.
Yes.
Mr. President, it's just, as a point of inquiry. Point of inquiry, please. I understand they just received it and placed it on a file. I asked the council to review it, so we could have a discussion. We could review it for the discussion for the July meeting.
Counselor Lungo Kern.
Thank you, President Carvajello. Is there any way you can put the argument in writing for us, so we could-
It is. I gave it to you.
Well, I just have, like, just this.
One is present and the other one is proposed. It's, that's the section of the law. To the left, on the top, it'll say "Present," and the next one down says "Proposed."
And if you-
Yes, it is.
But I'd like to just know exactly the argument, not necessarily the law, of what the city, you believe the city council can do-
If you want, I will send you a letter as it relates to that. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt you, Counselor Delarussue.
Motion to take hands, papers in the hands of the clerk, by Counselor Delarussue. Offered by Counselor Scarpelli, be resolved that the city council discuss concerns with Airbnb and Bs. Counselor Scarpelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know that we've talked about this issue in recent past, but I just wanted to revisit this. I had a few phone calls from a few constituents that were very concerned that we have a functioning Airbnb in our neighborhoods, and probably more than one, and we're not, and we're really not following what's happening in those areas and look into, you know, any ordinances or rules or any health codes that have to be passed. So if we can, I don't know if we can ask the, if we can look at what subcommittee we can move this to, if we can.
I think we already have this paper in subcommittee.
It still is.
Counselor Scarpelli, I think, if I'm not mistaken.
Thank you. Which one is it? Do you remember?
Counselor Knight, I think you can refer to that, I think it was you the proposer.
Mr. President, I've actually drafted a draft ordinance regulating short-term rentals, and I'm just putting the finishing touches on it, and I'm actually waiting for a little bit of feedback from two neighboring communities, and once I receive that information, I was going to introduce a paper. Ultimately, the paper that I put together with the proposal was to require a short-term rental operator's license, and to define a short-term rental as a bookstay of 29 consecutive nights or fewer. The State's Division of Local Services has offered a number of opinions on this relative to whether or not we can tax them as a motel or as a short-term lodging facility. So there are some technical questions and some technical expertise that's going to be required, Mr. President, before we can put together a working ordinance. In my research, one of the other things I've found is that in a lot of places, they've drafted and implemented ordinances that are so restrictive that they make it impossible to enforce, and that's something that I think we need to take a look at as well, because if we're going to craft an ordinance, we're going to have to craft something that's going to be able to be enforced, because if it's an ordinance that can't be enforced, people are going to continue with their behavior, and they're not going to comply with the regulations. So there's been several conversations that I've had between you and I, actually, because we were both working on this together, to address the issue. But I thank Counselor Scarpelli for bringing it up, and I can send him a copy of the draft proposal as soon as the finishing touches are put on.
At least for safety reasons anyway, no other reason.
If I can, and I appreciate that, and I know that Counselor Knight does an unbelievable job with his homework, so I think it's very important, I think that, you know, the concerns are loud and clear about the safety and letting our public safety officials, fire police, know what's going on, and right now, we don't have that, so I appreciate your effort, and I will let those residents know that we'll have something soon. So thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Knight.
A couple of the items that are being looked at would be an annual license, a residency requirement for the operator that has to reside in the property, onsite and off-street parking must be made available and utilized for all patrons in their vehicles, so onsite, off-street parking, that means that they're not going to be parking in neighborhoods, no more than two adults per bedroom per stay, no more than foreign-related individuals staying during the same stay, the provision of a copy of the noise, trash, and parking ordinances posted inside the rental dwelling and included in the rental contract, the provision of a 24/7 emergency contact hotline for all the neighbors to be posted on the front door in case anything happens, a physical safety inspection of the dwelling by the city on a quarterly basis, the cost of which will be borne by the short-term operator, the ability for the city to institute discipline that's progressive, up to and including fines and the revocation of license, and the requirements for a general liability insurance policy, Mr. President, and a figure that has to be determined to ensure that personal property and individuals that are staying in the place are protected appropriately. So those are some of the things, some of the things that we've looked at thus far.
Thank you. Counselor Falco.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank Counselor Scott Pelley for bringing this forward. This actually did come up at the last community police meeting, through a number of residents from actually different sections of the city, different neighborhoods, that had that same concern, and it really does impact the quality of life. I mean, take a look, you have more cars in the road, more cars parked in overcrowded neighborhoods, cars coming and going at different times of the day and night, so it really does become disruptive. It's something that we need to make sure we do have an ordinance in place. I'm glad that Counselor Knight has been working on this, and hopefully we can meet soon to review this in a subcommittee, but it's something- But it's something I definitely support, and I thank my colleagues for bringing it forward.
I think the last time I looked, I think there was like 74 B&Bs operating in the city of Medford.
There's a lot. There's more than...
And this is becoming the Uber of houses.
Correct. I mean, it's a, it's a major concern, and it does impact all neighborhoods. So it's something that we need to look at sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you. On the motion by Councilor Scott Pelley, seconded by... Councilor Knight.
I'd like to amend the paper, Mr. President, and get an update from our state delegation. I know that there was, um, a paper going through the House of Representatives to regulate short-term leases, and I know that there was also a paper in the Senate that was very different that was going through. So if we could get an update from our state delegation as to, um, the deliberations regarding any implementation of state law, I think that would be helpful as we look forward to, uh, constructing our local ordinance needs to comply with the state standard.
Thank you. Councilor Lungo Kern.
Thank you, President Carvillo. If we could just, um, make sure that the whole council gets a copy. I know it's going to go to subcommittee, and Councilor Knight's working on it. If we could just all get a copy so we can review it in the next month or so, that'd be great.
I'm going to give you the next one to watch coming down the line. It's Tackler. Tackler is an app that allows anybody to do anything, unlicensed plumbers, carbon electricians, to do work on people's houses just by going on an app. That'll be, that'll be coming down the line next. You'll watch.
Thank you.
On the motion by Councilor Scott Pelley, seconded by Councilor Falco, as amended by Councilor Lungo Kern. Anybody else? Anybody, Councilor Knight? All those in favor? Motion passes. Offered by Councilor Doloroso, be resolved that the Medford City Council offer sincere condolences to the family of the late Philip Hockel, longtime Democratic Committee Chairperson or Chairman. And we have one other also. We, Councilor Doloroso.
If I could, before we take the next one, uh, speak, Phil Hockel was a, uh, he's retired, he had retired to Florida recently and passed away unexpectedly down there. He comes from a very dedicated family in the city of Medford. He was very active in, in Democratic, uh, local politics. He was a fierce campaigner, a one-time candidate himself for the school committee. His brother Steve served on the school committee for many, several years. And he comes from a very dedicated family, and, uh, they were up for his funeral, uh, this week, and, uh, he was a decent man. He had a happy retirement, and the city was blessed by his activity here.
Thank you, Councilor Doloroso. We have one more. Offered by Councilor Doloroso and President Carvillo, be resolved that the Medford City Council offer sincere condolences to the family of Peta Taki Koleus, late proprietor of the Mets Donuts, uh, on his recent passing. Councilor Doloroso.
I know we're both frequenters of there. Taki is, uh, he was known, uh, by so many people, uh, is a immigrant to the United States, a hard-working man, worked in the restaurant business, opened up his own coffee shop, developed recipes, and produced one of the finest donuts in greater Boston, award-winning many times. And those of us who have had them know why. Very, very good. Decent family man, heart of gold, and a good businessman, and he'll be missed as well.
Thank you, Councilor Doloroso. If we could all rise for a moment of silence, please? Thank you. We have two papers here that were in committee. Uh, 17... 17, 513. Dear Mr. President, City Council, I respectfully request and recommend that your honor board appropriate $188,400 from the sale of lots and graves accounted to the Cemetery Department salary account. This recommended appropriation is requested in accordance with the fiscal 18-year budget. Cemetery Department salary account is reduced each year in anticipation of appropriation from sales of lots and graves. In addition, I respectfully request and recommend that your honor board appropriate $181,000, 186, 861 from the perpetual care to the Cemetery Department expense budget. This recommended appropriation is requested in accordance with the fiscal 2018 budget. Cemetery expense budget is reduced each year in anticipation of an appropriation from perpetual care. In anticipation of the upcoming budget hearings, I respectfully request that this be forwarded to the Committee of the Hall for a budget hearing. We had that hearing, uh, this evening, and it was passed. Motion to accept this paper. Offered by Councilor Doloroso, seconded by Councilor Knight. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Councilor Doloroso. Councilor Falco.
Yes.
Councilor Knight.
Yes.
Councilor Kern.
Yes.
Vice President Marks.
Yes.
Councilor Scott Pelley.
Yes.
President Carvillo. Yes. Seven in the affirmative, none of the negative. Motion passes. 17, 514. Dear Mr. President, City Council, I respectfully request and recommend that your honor board approve the following transfer. $900,000 to be transferred from water retained earnings to accounts 340, 450, 5780, 000, 000, 867, 2017 Water Capital Project. The amount of $900,000 is requested to purchase a water main leak detection system as was displayed in, in a meeting earlier this year with the Water and Sewer Commissioners. We strongly believe that this purchase will not only save dollars, but this, to this community. I respectfully request that this paper be forwarded to the Committee of the Hall for deliberation during the budget hearing process. The balance remaining in the water retained earning, earnings after this transfer will be $2,769,199. Sincerely, Stephanie M. Burke, Mayor. We, we spoke on this earlier this evening, and the paper was, um, adopted. Do we have a motion to accept this paper?
Move approval, Mr. President.
Motion by Councilor Knight, seconded by Doloroso. Mr. Councilor Marks. I'm sorry, Councilor Marks.
Thank you, Mr. President, just for the edification of the people at home. This has been a longstanding issue in the community, leak detection. I know, uh, former Councilor, uh, Penta, this was a big issue of his. Currently, right now, Mr. President, it ranges, but, uh, the last estimates we received from the MWRA is roughly 17% to 20% of our water in the community is unaccounted-for water, and each and every ratepayer pays additional on their bill for this unaccounted-for water. This particular new system, uh, is a technology that is an acoustic whistle. Uh, it's a device they put on the water mains and the gate valves, and, uh, it pinpoints where leaks are throughout the entire city. And, uh, roughly 90% of the leaks that we have out there don't surface, so these are underground leaks that we're not aware of. And according to the company that we met with, uh, Eclara Technologies, uh, the city over a five-year period, if we spot out these leaks and fix the leaks, uh, we could save roughly $5 million from this $900,000 investment and roughly 15,000 gallons, uh, 15 million gallons of water annually. So I would ask, Mr. President, in the interest of moving this forward on behalf of, uh, the beleaguered, uh, ratepayers of water and sewer in this community, uh, we move this forward. I would also ask, Mr. President, that we get a report back because, uh, this is a great system, and we're going to be alerted of many new leaks that we're not aware of, and we also need the capability within our water and sewer department to follow up on these leaks. And I have yet to see any new additional, uh, water and sewer employees, uh, with the main focus of this particular project in the budget. I also ask, Mr. President, that part of the water unaccounted-for in this community, some of its leaks, other of the unaccounted-for water, is the fact that our whole school department is not paying for water, even though it's mated. That's considered unaccounted-for. And every municipal building, even though it's mated, is still, uh, not being charged, and we don't include that in our operating expense under the budget, which it should be. That should be an operating expense in the budget. We've already sat through the budget side on the municipal side. I didn't see any additional money for, uh, water or sewer on the city side, and tomorrow night, we're meeting with the schools. I'm going to ask that question, but I guarantee you, it's not part of the operating expense of the school side, Mr. President. So if we really want to get a handle on unaccounted-for water, to me, that's hydrants, that is leaks, it's not mated property. That's not unaccounted-for. When I can tell how much money and how much water you're using, that's not unaccounted-for. That's accounted-for, Mr. President, like every taxpayer and ratepayer in this community. Their water is accounted-for. And, you know, it'd be nice to have a budget where you don't have to put that in as an operating expense, but that's not reality. That's not reality, Mr. President. That's hold the school department and the municipal side accountable for the water they use. There's no incentive there. They can let the faucets run all night here. They don't care. It gets put onto the ratepayers. So, Mr. President, we really need to address that. I'm, I'm happy we're moving forward on this. I also think, as I mentioned, INI inflow infiltration with the sewer department, with the, with our sewer pipes, it's costing the ratepayers millions of dollars a year to treat groundwater that's seeping into our sewer pipes as raw sewage. That's a huge issue that needs to be addressed. This is one step in the process, but it has to be accompanied with additional personnel. So that'd be my recommendation, Mr. President. I think we already voted on this a couple of weeks ago.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we get a response back, Mr. Clerk? On our recommendation?
Was it part of the budget or part of the resolution?
No, there was a resolution offered a few weeks ago. I think it was the same exact resolution.
Yeah. I think it came with this resolution.
Right, so we haven't got a response from that?
I don't recall getting that.
Okay, so we should get a response soon, Mr. President, on the, why these schools and the municipal side, uh, are not paying through their operating expense of the budget.
On the motion, I'm sorry, name and address of the record, please.
Jean Martin, 10 Coming Street, just real quick. Uh, I just wanted to point out, I know that this is Debbie Downer time, but it's a hidden tax. Uh, when the water is put on, uh, through the water ratepayers, it's another hidden tax, and it gets around Prop 2 and 1/2. And I just wanted to make everybody aware of that. I know nobody wants to hear that because it's not good news, but it's a hidden tax. And so it's, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, Bob Penta, Zero Summit Road, Medford, Mass. Two components on this particular issue, and I'm glad it's coming up now. The first one is, um, I think it's about $112,000. That's all that it would cost. This is what we were led to believe and what we were told when we changed over from the old metering system to the new one, to have a computerization program upstairs in the engineer's office that would detect and identify anybody's house in the city of Medford where water would be constantly running or wherever leak might be. On a, and on a daily basis, it would be reviewed, and that homeowner, taxpayer, ratepayer would be identified either by a phone call or an email or what have you. That's, still hasn't taken place. And I think the next big thing you really need to address is that 10 years is already up relative to the meters that are in the houses. And that's going to have to take a second look on those batteries that are in there and just how accurate they are. So I would suggest that you probably make a, a resolution to investigate that with the Water and Sewer Commissioner. What's their intent going forward as it relates to the, um, accuracy of the batteries that are there, the meters that are there right now that are over 10 years? And second of all, why can't some money in that multi-million-dollar surplus account be used to put that program? You don't even have to have an employee. It's an automatic program that just spits it out on a daily basis. Someone just looks at it, and it's just, you know, as Jeannie Martin just said, you know, why keep hurting the taxpayer, ratepayer for no reason at all? These are just simple, common sense, everyday business practices that should be employed. Thank you, Councilor Marks.
Thank you. On the motion, uh, as amended by, I think we had the original paper by Councilor Marks.
Well, actually, we put back in the priority leaks, how we're going to address this property.
The original paper, we were going to report back on the, on the report on, on the administration will let us know in the priority of the leaks also.
As long as, as long as we get an answer.
Mr. President.
Thank you.
As amended.
As amended. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Councilor Doloroso.
Yes.
Councilor Falco.
Yes.
Councilor Knight.
Yes.
Councilor Lungo Kern.
Yes.
President, Vice President Marks.
Yes.
Councilor Scott Pelley. Absence.
President Carvillo.
Yes. Six in the affirmative, one absent. Before we adjourn, on Sunday, uh, January 25th, at 10 o'clock at Veterans Memorial Park, we will be dedicating some more, I think about 36 more names will be added to Veterans Memorial Park. So again, if everybody could turn out, there'd be a nice, uh, taking. 10 o'clock on Sunday, Veterans Memorial Park. Records of the meeting of June 6, 2017 were tabled and passed to Vice President Marks.
Uh, you want to do the subcommittee?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Subcommittee report.
Adam, you want to report on the subcommittee?
Mr. Lai.
Yes. Motion by Councilor Knight to report the subcommittee report.
Um, Mr. President, earlier this morning, uh, this afternoon, uh, the Subcommittee on Zoning and Ordinances met to discuss paper, I believe it was 11474, um, related to wireless telecommunication towers in the city of Medford. A presentation was put on by the, uh, city solicitor and the building commissioner. Upon conclusion of the presentation, the council moved, uh, the subcommittee moved to, uh, refer the paper to the Committee of the Hall. So the paper's going to go before the Committee of the Hall for further discussion and deliberation. Uh, it was a rather well-thought-out and technical ordinance that governed the placement of cell phone towers and wireless telecommunication facilities in the city of Medford.
Thank you, Councilor Knight. On the motion by Council...
Accept the paper, Mr. President.
On the motion by Councilor Knight that we accept, Vice President Marks.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I just want to thank, uh, my council colleague for, uh, calling the meeting. Um, this, uh, particular ordinance, uh, was something that was proposed back in 2011 to address, uh, concerns of, uh, companies coming into this community and erecting cell towers in residential areas. And at the time, we put together, I believe it was a seven or eight-page ordinance that protected neighborhoods in the first place, and secondly, uh, made it difficult for those who wanted to come in here and thought they just had to apply for a building permit and an electrical permit. And I think what this ordinance does, Mr. President, it, uh, really puts some teeth out there that, uh, keeps these particular cell towers to, uh, industrial and commercial zone two areas and keep, keep them away from neighborhoods, and also puts a number of restrictions, height restrictions, setback restrictions, um, and, uh, in my opinion, will go a long way to ensuring, uh, neighborhoods that all of a sudden, a 74-foot cell tower is not going to appear in their neighborhood. Now, uh, we all are aware, uh, and it was recently on the news, I think it was Channel 5, they did a spotlight report on the MBTA. The MBTA is looking to raise revenue now, and, uh, as part of that, they're also offering, uh, riders on their commuter rail, um, the ability to access the internet. And in doing so, Mr. President, they have to erect a number of, uh, these cell towers along the route of, uh, the train. And, uh, the city of Medford, uh, as far as I know, we're getting three now. It was two, and now there was just a third request. We're getting three, Mr. President. And, uh, like I said, the intent is to provide, uh, cell communication and internet access, which is great on the, the train. I'm not opposed to that, but we got to make sure when these cell towers are erected, that they're erected in a way that, uh, is not a blight to the neighborhood. And, uh, as far as I'm concerned, uh, the one near Tyler Ave, or the address of Tyler Ave, is in a neighborhood, Mr. President, even though it's on train tracks that abut the, uh, the neighborhood. And Chonwood Road, again, in a neighborhood, abuts train tracks. The other one, I believe, is, uh, in the Wellington area, um...
Rivers Edge.
Uh, on Rivers Edge, thank you, uh, which does abut residential areas too, Mr. President. So, uh, this, this ordinance will go a long way, uh, for protecting our neighborhood, uh, our neighborhoods, and, uh, I look forward to the eventual sending this to the Office of Community Development and for their recommendations, and then eventual passage, Mr. President, on this ordinance.
Thank you, Councilor, for taking that out of mouthwash for us. Councilor Knight.
Um, yes, Mr. President, I think it's also very important to point out that although this is an ordinance change, it will have to go through the legislative process, but it's also a zoning change. So because it's a zoning change, it's going to take about 180 days from start to finish for the paper to, uh, come to fruition. I don't want to think that people to think this is something we're delaying. Um, it has to go to the Community Development Board, come back to the council. There has to be a series of public hearings before, uh, we can move on it. So that's why, um, it's good that we're starting the process now.
Thank you. Thank you. On the motion by Counselor Knight, as seconded by Counselor Delarussell, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. The tabled records of the meeting of June 6, 2017, were passed to Vice President Marks. Mr. Vice President, were you able to review those records and how did you find them?
Mr. President, I reviewed the records, find them to be in order.
Thank you. Motion by Counselor, by Vice President Marks, seconded by Counselor Knight, for the approval of the records. The records of the meeting of June 13, 2017, were passed to Counselor Scott Pelley. Counselor Scott Pelley, how did you find those records?
I found the records in order. My motion moved, placed on-
On the motion by Counselor Scott Pelley, seconded by Counselor Falco, all of them in favor? Aye. Motion to adjourn, offered by Counselor Knight, seconded by Counselor Delarussell, all of them in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Meeting adjourned.